And I'm going to call this Town of Adams Board of Selectmen meeting to order on Wednesday, April 7th, 2020, 21, sorry. I'm just gonna, okay, so we are called to order. And before we get into the business on our agenda, let me just remind folks that we are operating remotely. And we are doing so pursuant to Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the governor's orders imposing limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as the DPH's designation of currently red for the Town of Adams. This meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public has been permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the orders. Attending remotely this evening are all members of the Board of Selectmen, including myself, Chairman Christine Hoyt, Vice Chairman Rick Blanchard, members John Duval, and member Joe Novak. Attending from the town, we have Town Administrator Jay Green. We have Administrative Assistant Deb Dunlap, Attorney St. John III, Town Clerk Haley Mezawar, Board of Health Chair David Rhodes. And I believe, oh, my people just moved around on my screen a little bit. Oh, Deb's connecting to audio, that's why. And we do have members of the public with us, Jack Guarino from iBerkshire's, our friends from Northern Berkshire Community Television, and it looks like we have John Sheeran from Original Seed, who is here for an item that is on the agenda. We have posted today's agenda in accordance with open meeting law, which included the call-in information for today's meeting. And despite our best efforts, if we're not able to provide for real-time access for the public to participate today, a recording of this meeting can be made available upon request, as this meeting is being recorded using the Zoom platform. As we are participating remotely, please note that all votes taken during this meeting will be made by a roll-call vote, in which I will state the member's name, ask for their vote, for each vote necessary today. And entering the virtual room is Scott Stafford from the Berkshire Eagle. So I do believe that I have called upon, I've called out all of the names of the people who are attending virtually, just to give those who are attending by phone a lay of the land. If things change, I will do my best to announce somebody else who has joined the room. With all of the housekeeping that has just been done, it looks like we can move on to the rest of the agenda, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I will just ask if you could please stand and recite the pledge with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That brings us to our first item of business, the approval of minutes for the March 31st, 2021, meeting. And it looks like all members, actually, I believe it was a workshop, sorry, all members are able to vote on this item.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we waive a reading of the minutes and approve as provided for, March 31st, 2021.
I have a motion by Member Blanchard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Duval. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, it is a roll-call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. We'll go ahead and move on to public comment. We have a number of people on this call tonight, so is there anybody who is on this call who wishes to speak to the board about a matter? If so, just, I ask that you politely unmute yourself, state your name, and what you wish to speak about. Okay. Hearing none, I will go on to new business. First item under new business is an update on COVID-19 from the Board of Health. In speaking with Dr. Rhodes, who is the Chair of the Board of Health, he did ask for some time this evening to not only brief the Board of Selectmen about an update on COVID-19 here in the Town of Adams, but to also use some time this evening to speak directly to the residents who are tuning in. So with that, Dr. Rhodes, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. And yeah, it's always daunting to convey bad news, but as Chairman Hoyt said, we are in the red here in Adams. Following, we have at least one new case per average every day over the last three weeks. And, and so that we're definitely on a surge. Just really need to, basically, what I want to do is to reiterate need for COVID precautions until a substantial number of us are fully immunized. We are hopeful that we will achieve that within the next maybe two months if the administration is able to step up their vaccine production. So why is this happening? We know that there are three highly transmissible variants. I won't give you the numbers, but these are those that are first identified in South Africa, in Brazil, and in the UK. It turns out that right now, as I said, they are more rapidly transmissible. And I believe the UK variant is now the prevalent one in Massachusetts, so that's, it's spread more quickly. Because we are getting vaccinated, I know people in the spring, people are gathering more and giving the virus more chance to spread. And finally, just need to reiterate the insidious fact about this virus, is it is spread asymptomatic. You catch it, it replicates in your body, it can spread before, several days before you come down with symptoms, if you even do. If you don't come down with symptoms, then you've spread it, and you won't even be able to alert your friends and family. And so, basically, keeping from catching the virus in the first place is the A number one priority. So what can we do? I mean, I think I could say these, you can probably recite them by heart, maintain the hygiene practices, wash your hands frequently after going, before going outside, coming back in, practice social distancing, wear your mask. You see many people out not wearing their mask. And now, even if you're vaccinated, there is small chance you can become infected and pass it on. The data are such that it looks like a chance is low, but it's not zero. And so, and definitely, those who have recovered from COVID can still catch it again and pass it on. So that is, you know, being a recovered COVID patient does not make you fully immune. As best you can, stay in your pod. So don't get close to people who are outside your pod, you don't know where they've been. You may trust them, but, and you may love them, but we need to respect that distancing. And, and if you need to travel, I know we need to travel, we want to get out, but if you do, redouble your efforts of precautions, because you want to keep yourself safe, those around you, and so forth. Here's a big one, avoid large gatherings. College is over, so we're getting to that stage, college kids coming home. One of my colleagues said, college students and social distancing are mutually exclusive. Some colleges have done better than others at keeping their students safe, but, but we know, I mean, it's, I mean, we've all been in college, we know what it's like. So it's, we need, basically, to acknowledge that and to do the quarantine when you come home. And last of all, get vaccinated, please get vaccinated. And I've heard stories of people say, well, I want to wait for the Pfizer, I want to wait for the J and J. It's not worth it. Get vaccinated as soon as you can, because the sooner we all get vaccinated, the sooner we will reach that term immunity. And so, do I have anything? I guess, I would like, basically, to close this, sort of have this, you know, what's, what's the worst? The worst is a new variant could arise that will actually require a new vaccine. And so, if we can stop the spread sooner, we will delay that potentiality. And the hope is that in the, in the end, maybe this will be like the flu, we've all become accustomed to yearly flu vaccines. But the better we can learn how to control the virus now, the better prepared we will be for whatever comes down the road. So without, if you have any questions, please ask me. I get pretty passionate about this.
We appreciate your, your passion and for keeping us informed and for staying on top of the, the data, Dr. Rhodes. At this time, are there any questions from any members of the board? Rick, I'll start with you.
Uh, no, I have nothing.
Okay. John?
I just have a question. The Council on Aging, under Erica, have done a fantastic job working with the elderly to ensure that they, help them with their appointments, vaccine appointments, and also gathering information from others that are getting ready to get vaccinated. I was just, I've been wondering about, in our community, what if someone is still, you know, over 65, or, or, you know, they just are still having problems getting a vaccine, vaccination appointment? What should they do? Who should they reach out to for help if there's still individuals that still haven't got the vaccine shot that should have at this point?
Could be able, they could be able to call the Council on Aging, or, or call the Board of Health Office, and Pam can relay the message to me, and I'll do my, if the person is down and out, homebound, there's, the program started a couple of weeks ago of, the state is actually driving around, and, and very nicely, they've got J and J, the one-shot vaccine for that, because that makes it a lot more convenient, they don't have to drive around the county once rather than, than twice. But, yeah, if the individual or family member can reach out to Erica or me, we'll, we'll track down the best way. The county is in the process, actually, of changing over the registration platform, and I won't go into the details, it's sort of wacky, but hopefully, the new platform will make it easier for people to register here in Berkshire County.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, any questions?
Yeah, and mainly comments. Once again, I'd like to thank you, David, for your thoughtfulness concerning this subject. To me, I feel a little disappointed, because as a community and as a Board of Selectmen, we've, and Jay Green really spearheading it, we've really tried to keep people abreast of what's going on and what they need to do. And it's frustrating to see that our numbers are climbing. And it's just that people, I don't understand why they're not taking this more seriously. And another thing with the variant, the UK variant, it's showing that it's affecting younger people much more than the elderly. And a lot of thought is being put in that it has to do with younger people, perhaps playing sports, not being masked as they should. When you're young, you kind of feel like, you know, you're invincible. And so, that, that's quite alarming now, also with children going back to school, this may cause an increase in cases also. And lastly, the CDC is kind of finding, or, as you mentioned, to wash your hands, but there's been less alarm about passing COVID through surfaces and touch. But once again, it's still very important that people go through all of the things that you recapped to try to stop the spread of COVID. And once again, thanks for all you do with the Board of Health.
I actually did, I don't know, but I did want to start off by saying, thank you to all of you who have been on the forefront here and, and working hard to keep the town safe. It, it has been actually remarkable. And this, this new spread is basically, we, we got a bad variant coming down, and it's, and we had a law in cases, and so it makes sense that, you know, people let their guard down, but it's now time to put that guard right back up. Thank you, Joe, that's for your comments.
There are no other questions. Once again, thank you to Dr. Rhodes for joining us for the update. I'm going to ask that you stay on for the next item on the agenda as well. So the next item is the appointment as an alternate to the Berkshire Public Health Alliance Governing Board. Dr. Rhodes does represent the Town of Adams on this board, but in the unlikely event that he can't attend one of the, it's quarterly meetings, I believe, he is looking for an alternate to be appointed to this governing board, and had a conversation with Town Administrator Jay Green about serving in that alternate role, considering Jay's background as serving on the Board of Health in the city of Pittsfield. And, Dr. Rhodes, I don't know if there was anything else you wanted to mention that maybe I didn't?
No, it was actually interesting, because when I became the representative from Adams, it was Alan, Alan Bendel, who was former Board of, he was Board of Selectmen, Board of Health. And, and he, it was an interest to him, and he actually took that role for several years. And so, it became almost invisible to us on the Board of Health. And, and it was pointed out that we should have a Health Alliance representative from the Board of Health, and so I took that on. And, you know, may, may Alan rest in peace, but we, it's, thank you, Skip Harrington, I'm sorry, Skip Harrington, yeah, yeah, he was, yeah, a very loyal attendee. And so, thank, thank Town Administrator Green for pitching, and it's, it's a very good organization, good county regionalization, so, so thank you, thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Of course, it's my, my pleasure.
So I do need a motion from the board to make this appointment as appointment of Jay Green as an alternate to the Berkshire Public Health Alliance Governing Board.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Blanchard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second by Member Duval. Any discussion on this?
Yes, I would just like, Dr. Rhodes, since this is a public meeting, to let people know exactly what the Berkshire Public Health Alliance Governing Board is and the type of work they do.
It was formed by a DPH grant, a Department of Public Health grant, almost 10 years ago, to provide regional resources. So here in Berkshire County, we formed, we didn't even have my house here when this was started, but the, they provide inspectional services, Title V, for small towns, as well as public health nursing for small towns. We are fortunate enough that we have a code enforcement officer to take care of most of our inspectional needs, and, and a public health nurse from Berkshire VNA. The, the Public Health Alliance actually covers about half the counties that can't afford to take one on themselves. We do rely on the Health Alliance at the current point for Title V inspections, of which we actually need very few, because we don't have the septic systems. But applying for grants, keeping people informed, it's, it's a great organization. I've met my colleagues from across the county, and a lot of dedicated people, and, and, no, they're, they're actually the ones that buy the, I shouldn't, they're the ones that buy the flu vaccine for county clinics, or the yearly county clinics, and they run the clinics, so very, very active.
Okay, thank you.
If there's nothing else, it is a roll-call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. So thank you to Dr. Rhodes for alerting us to the need for an alternate, and thank you to Town Administrator Green for agreeing to serve in that role.
And I will relay this vote to the Health Alliance tonight. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that, thank you. All right, we will move on to the next item of business, which is the 2021 Town Election Update. In our packets. Oh, that's the appointment, sorry. Why don't I turn things over to Haley? Because I think Haley, you wanted to just talk about some upcoming deadlines and the schedule first, and then we have the next two items, which is the appointment of a temporary town clerk, as well as the Town Election Warrant. So, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. For anybody out there that does not know, our annual town election is May 3rd, it's a Monday. It will be at the DPW Garage at 92 North Summer Street from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The deadline to register to vote for this May 3rd election is this coming Tuesday, April 13th. You can register online, or you can register by coming to Town Hall. We are still closed to the public, but we certainly take appointments, and there will be information on the door that day, just letting you know what you need to do to call the office, when we come meet you at the door. We will be there until 8 o'clock that night. So again, there will be staff there from 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night, so that you can register to vote, if you want to come into Town Hall to be able to register to vote, or you can certainly go online and do it online. I just want to talk a little bit about absentee ballots and vote-by-mail applications. So you can, if you can't make the election and you certainly want to vote, I would suggest that you, thank you Chairman Hoyt for putting this up on the, on the, from the website, that you can apply for an absentee, there's an absentee ballot application, and then there's a vote-by-mail application, they're pretty much one of the same. You'll get a ballot in the mail, and then you can return it to Town Hall. So if you're interested and you cannot come to the DPW Garage on May 3rd, I suggest that you fill out one of these applications and get it to us as soon as possible. I expect that I will have those ballots in either by the end of this week or beginning of early next week, and then we will getting, we'll be getting them out in the mail. They do need, need to be returned by May 3rd, though, in order for that to be able to count. So again, I can't stress it enough, fill out the application, get it into our office, you can drop it off in the Dropbox out in front of Town Hall, or mail it in, and then we will mail you your ballot, and then you, you'll get your ballot in the mail, and then you can drop it off in the Dropbox also, or you can mail it back into us. So we'll be checking the Dropbox daily, as we always do, so there's no, so you don't have to worry about that. And certainly, if you have any questions about the upcoming election, feel free to call our office, and we will try to walk you through or help you with whatever your questions are. I think that's about it for that. I know on the next two items on the agenda, there's one for appointing a temporary town clerk for that day on May 3rd, and then, of course, the Town Election Warrant.
Okay. Before we move on to that, does anyone have any questions about the deadlines or application by mail? Rick, do you, you have a, you've unmuted. Okay. John, do you have anything?
No questions.
Okay, Joe?
No questions.
Okay. All right, then Haley, we'll move on to the appointment of the temporary town clerk. And here's the letter that you put in our packets, and I can go ahead and read that if you would like me to. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, like, if you wanted to read it, go right ahead.
I can read it if you want.
I'll let you do that, how about that?
Okay, all right. So, Dear Chairman Hoy, as you are aware, Mass. General Law, Chapter 268a, Section 19, prohibits a meaningful employee from participating as such in a particular manner in which, to his or her knowledge, he or she has a financial interest. Therefore, under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 14, it is necessary for the Board of Selectmen to appoint a temporary town clerk to perform the duties of the town clerk for the election to be held on Monday, May 3rd, 2021. That temporary town clerk shall be sworn in by the chairperson of the Board of Selectmen. This is a similar situation that has occurred in past elections, when the town clerk was up for reelection. It has become customary to appoint the chairman of the Board of Registars to serve as temporary town clerk. For that reason, it would be acceptable to appoint Timothy F. Rowley as temporary town clerk for the upcoming election day.
Thank you, Haley, appreciate that. So I am looking for a vote of the, or motion from the board to appoint Timothy F. Rowley as the temporary town clerk for the upcoming election day, which is Monday, May 3rd, 2021.
So moved.
I have a motion by Member Blanchard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Duval. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll-call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we will move on to item E, which is the 2021 Town Election Warrant. If I can pull it up on my screen, Haley, I will.
I can read it if you'd like.
Yep, I'm going to have you go ahead and read it, and I will do my best to share it as well.
In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town who are qualified to vote in elections to meet and to vote precincts 1 through 5 at the Adams Highway Department Garage, 92 North Summer Street in Adams, on Monday, the 3rd of May, 2021, from 7:00 to 7:00. To cast their votes in the town election for candidates for the following offices, one moderator for a term of one year, one town clerk for a term of three years, two selectmen for a term of three years, one assessor for a term of three years, one Board of Health member for a term of three years, two library trustees for a term of three years, three park commissioners for a term of three years, one park commissioner for a term of two years, one planning board member for a term of five years, one cemetery commissioner for a term of three years, one housing authority member for a term of five years, one housing authority member for a term of four years, and then one housing authority member for two years, one redevelopment authority member for four years, and one redevelopment authority member for three years, one Northern Berkshire Regional Vocational School District Committee member for three years, one Housat Valley Regional School District Committee member, the Adams representative for three years, and then one Housat Valley Regional School District Committee member, our Cheshire representative for three years.
and then one Housat Valley Regional School District Committee member, our Cheshire representative for three years. And then, under Town Meeting Members, for Precinct 1, we have 10 Town Meeting Members for three years, Precinct 2, 10 Town Meeting Members for three years, and one Town Meeting Member for two years, Precinct 3, 10 Town Meeting Members for three years, and one Town Meeting Member for one year, Precinct 4, 10 Town Meeting Members for a term of three years, two Town Meeting Members for two years, and three Town Meeting Members for one year, and Precinct 5, 10 Town Meeting Members for three years, three Town Meeting Members for two years, and two Town Meeting Members for one year. And the polls again will be open from 7:00 to 7:00, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Monday, May 3rd.
I can't find my meeting controls after I share my screen. So my apologies for the delay. So Haley, you need a vote of the Board of Selectmen to accept the town election warrant as presented?
Yep.
For the Monday, May 3rd, 2021 Annual Town Election.
Correct.
So moved.
Hey, I have a motion by Member Blanchard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Duval. Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to ask Haley, of all the positions that are up for reelection or to be filled, how many of them will there be no candidates?
I think there's eight on the actual offices and then we have a few for Town Meeting Members, different Town Meeting Members. So I would suggest that if anybody is interested in doing a write-in campaign or writing themselves, you know, having somebody write themselves in for Town Meeting Members, if they're at all interested to call our office and we can give them the instructions on what they really should do. It's really, really specific to Town Meeting Members because, as I just mentioned, there's different offices open. So somebody may want to do a write-in campaign, but they want to be specific on what office they're really running for, whether it's a one-year position or a two-year position. So if anybody, again, is interested in any of any of these positions or has any questions, to please just call our office and we'll we'll try to help them get elected the way that, you know, they should get elected, you know, by making sure they're in the right spot. So and again, I hopefully I will have my ballots, the absentee early voting ballots by the end of the week, beginning of next week. And then we'll be posting them up on the website, too. So if somebody has any more specific questions, they'll be able to view the ballots before they even come to the polls on May 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
I just have a quick question, Haley. How many votes does one need if they're running a write-in campaign for a open position if it's just one person?
I'd like five.
Five? Okay. They have to beat Mickey Mouse, though, right? Usually that gets a lot of votes.
Mickey Mouse or Snoopy.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, if there's no other questions or discussion on this, it is a roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine. That is unanimous. I do have a request of the Board of Selectmen to see if you could stop by Town Hall tomorrow to sign the town election warrant. It is important that we have a quick turnaround on this for our town clerk.
Quick question, when will it be available?
I believe that Deb had that prepared and she was going to have it ready for first thing in the morning.
So if I stop today, it'll be there?
It should be ready for 8:00 AM, but I'll let Deb answer that herself. She just unmuted.
Yes, it is available right now in the box.
Okay, thank you.
Rick is the early one. So that's good. All right, so just a reminder, if you can stop in tomorrow, the earlier the better. All right, thank you very much, Haley. I appreciate all of that this evening.
Thank you.
So that brings us to, we have applications for weekly entertainment licenses in front of us this evening. And so we do have the Adams Agricultural Fair that is looking for a weekly entertainment license. And it looks like it is for a time period in August, so August 6th through the 8th. Is that correct, Deb?
The weekly entertainment license actually, I believe, is from the time that it's approved until the end of the year.
Okay.
Specifically looking for the Aggie Fair, but they're looking to have other events during the year.
Got it. I was just, yeah, that's what I was confused about because it has some actual dates, but I thought this was an annual license. Okay.
They didn't pay the annual fee.
Okay. Got it. Okay, so this would be an annual weekly entertainment license for the Adams Agricultural Fair. Which is something that they have done in the past.
Make a motion to board approve the weekly entertainment license for the Adams Agricultural Fair.
All right, I have a motion by Member Blanchard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Duval. Any discussion, questions?
Oh, sorry.
John, yep?
Okay, you mentioned that they've done this in the past and we've approved it. I may have asked this question in the past, but does what if they, I'm not saying they're going to, what if if we approve something like this that a large concert is going to be held and you know, do they have to go through a, you know, the police department? Because it indicates here that no security is necessary or traffic control. But and I say they're going to do this, but this is really just a general question. Will we approve these things? What if a concert of, you know, hundreds of people and do they have to go through and request the approvals of Town Administrator and the and the, for example, the police chief, things like that?
I think we would have to look into that because I don't really want to answer that, but I, I mean, I don't know if Ed has that answer. I mean, like, I really don't want to speculate on that one.
My answer would be that they would have to obtain permits for something, an event like that because you're talking about dealing with health, health or sanitary code issues. You're dealing with issues involving traffic control, public safety, about anything. So, yeah, I would think you'd have to.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none. It is a roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine. So that is unanimous. That brings us to a weekly entertainment license for Original Seed's cigar and lounge. They're located at 32 North Summer Street. I believe this is the first time that we are seeing this application since they are new to the town of Adams. And they are looking to operate daily 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I believe that John Sharon is on the call. So if there are any questions specific to this license, Mr. Sharon would be able to answer them. First, would anyone like to make a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to board approve the weekly entertainment license for Original Seed Cigar Lounge.
I have a motion by a Member Blanchard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Duval. Any questions or discussion?
I just, since Mr. Sharon is on the phone, being a new establishment, can you tell the public what you plan to do as far as weekly entertainment license? And also, if Rick could just amend his motion to give the times when this weekly entertainment license will be in use, I think would be well-served. But
I will amend it to say for the year 2021.
And the times, would that be relevant to it? Because within the times that are listed here, be part of the motion?
Well, the license is good for the year. So it'd be like, basically, the alcohol licenses, we don't dictate outside of law what the times would be.
Well, he did, he does have them listed here. So then if that's the case, it's a mute point. But Mr. Sharon, could you tell tell the people who are listening a little bit about your establishment and what you plan on doing for weekly entertainment? I'd be interested to know because I'm not sure what a cigar lounge is and what what type of entertainment would be appropriate for one.
Hi, this is Tracy Sharon, John's wife. And hi, guys. So we applied because we have a pool table in-house and we also have a television in-house. And then we will be running some events such as a trivia night, maybe a comedy show every now and then, like a jazz trio to play, just some pretty low-key entertainment. Never to exceed 49 occupants in the building at a time, and that's a lot, actually. So most events would probably be 20 to 25 people.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Just to clarify that this request is for Sunday's 9:00 AM to noon and identifies pretty much what has been stated. So really, there's nothing different that's going to happen on Sunday mornings throughout the year than may happen on a Saturday morning or a morning during the week. That's my question, pretty much same type of events.
Correct. I believe we had to put the times on Sunday because there's the two permits. There's one after 1:00 or noon and then and then one before. So just in case, because we have the television or pool table, since we open at 10:00, we didn't want to have to restrict everybody.
Right. Okay, so I'm just curious, are there two, what it says here, it says 9:00 to 12:00 noon on Sunday. So is there another area where it indicates the afternoon also or?
So there's actually two licenses that they are applying for. The first is the weekly entertainment license. And then separately is a Sunday entertainment license, which we'll take up as a another motion, an item. So the weekly entertainment license is indicating that it would be daily 10:00 AM to occasionally 9:00 PM as their hours.
I didn't see that as part of the packet we have. Do we have both licenses?
We do. You should. Yep. It would have been right behind the weekly entertainment license that was provided for the Aggie Fair. It has, you're not on video. I was going to show you what it looked like, but it had some blue boxes.
Okay, now I see it. Okay, it has the blue boxes, too. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, my very technical term, blue boxes. Sorry. Okay. That's the first one we're going to take up is the weekly entertainment license for Original Seed. So if there aren't any other questions or discussion, I will go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And it is a yes from Christine. So that is unanimous. I'm just going to ask the board, if we can, to just take the next two out of order. We have applications for Sunday entertainment licenses. Those are just a single piece of paper. And since we are still talking about Original Seed at 32 North Summer Street, can we take the Sunday entertainment license up first? And this this is the one that indicated that ours.
I'll make a motion to the board to approve the Sunday entertainment license for Original Seed Cigar Lounge to operate between 9:00 AM and 12:00 PM.
Okay. I have a motion by Member Blanchard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Duval. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. It is a roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It's a yes from Christine. So that is unanimous. I'd like to thank Tracy, and I think John was in the background, for signing on tonight and for answering some questions about their licensing. So then we will move on to the Adams Agricultural Fair Sunday Entertainment License to be used at Bowfield. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to board approve the Sunday Entertainment License license for Adams Agricultural Fair to operate between 9:00 and 10:00.
I have a motion by Member Blanchard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none. It is a roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It's a yes from Christine. So that is unanimous. So thank you for that. Okay. Bless you. So the next item is item H on the agenda. It's a request to the Planning Board to review the marijuana zoning bylaws. As a reminder to the board, we did have a workshop last Wednesday in which we did review the marijuana bylaws. Consensus was for a memo to come from the Adams Board of Selectmen to the Adams Planning Board to ask them to review the bylaws. So in front of me is the memorandum to send to the Planning Board, and I will read it to you. Yes. Oh, would you like to recuse yourself?
Yes, I would like, I'm going to step away from the board for discussion in regards to this matter as a result of my employer's legal counsel, as we are a federal contractor to the US government and marijuana is still identified as illegal in the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you, John. So please let the minutes reflect that John has recused himself from this item. So the memo would state, recently, the Town Administrator has brought to our attention the number of inquiries from proposed marijuana cultivation and manufacturing businesses regarding the availability of properties within the Adams Corporate Park. Several parties have expressed their interest in locating in Adams. These business entities have been seeking suitable locations, both on vacant land and within existing industrial-type buildings. There remains a large undeveloped lot in the park, and it is our understanding that currently there are two buildings that are vacant. We would ask the Planning Board to reconsider the town's current location restrictions for marijuana businesses. The Board of Selectmen respectfully requests that the Planning Board consider amendments to allow both cultivation and manufacturing within the town's industrial park IP zoning district. And with board approval, we, I will sign this and send this up to the planning board on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion to the board to approve the memorandum request to the planning board.
I have a motion by member Blanchard. Do I have a second?
Second?
Second by member Novak. Any discussion?
Yes, I was wondering, is, should there be something added that research also is a possibility?
I believe the research and testing was already included.
It was that, then I didn't hear when it was stated. I just heard.
No, I mean in the current, in the current bylaw. Or the current zoning rules, I thought testing and research was already approved.
For the corporate park, I believe that it is as well. And so the addition, or what the request is, is to allow for cultivation and manufacturing in the corporate park because those are prohibited currently.
Okay, so we're just taking for granted that that covenant will cover since the other businesses quote our research. For instance, what, what business within the corporate park is a research business?
Well, it doesn't have to, in, in the, I believe in the current zoning rules, by special permit, it is already allowed. Whereas growing and manufacturing are not allowed.
Well, if that's the case, it would just be, I think, just as easy to put research in. And unless it's an understood, I, I don't know personally. I've never really read what was in the the documents for the industrial park as far as the wording. So if it is there that it's taken places, research within that park, industrial park, then I guess it's okay.
I don't have a copy of the marijuana bylaws in front of me or able to bring them up on my screen to triple check that. But I will double check with the community development office that that is in fact included, as member Blanchard and myself recall that it is. If it is not, I will certainly add that to the memo as indicated by member Novak's request. Would that satisfy? What you're looking?
Yeah, that's.
Joe, are you still there?
Yes, I am. I didn't know you were alluding to me. Yes, that would be fine.
Okay. So with that, it is a roll call vote to send the memo to the Adams Planning Board. Rick?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. All right. And we'll see if we can get John back to join us.
I'm back.
All right. Thank you, John. All right, so that brings us to item I on the agenda. It is the evaluation and salary review of the town administrator. The Board of Selectmen did conduct an evaluation, a performance evaluation of the town administrator. All forms were submitted by late December. Once they were received, they were provided to the town accountant's office. And Ashley Sacco in the town accountant's office was asked to compile all of the information into one document. And then that document was turned into an executive summary, which I have here this evening that I'll be presenting to the Board of Selectmen. So Jay, my apologies that like, we're not doing this in the, the room together. My hope had been that we would all be able to be sitting in a room and be able to look at one another, look each other in the eye to make this a friendlier process. However, we, as all of you know, have been operating remotely since December. And we, we need to complete this, this task. So I'm going to read a lengthy executive summary so that this can be entered into the record officially. So the town administrator evaluation was comprised of three sections. One, performance category scoring. Two, progress on goals. And three, a narrative evaluation. Once the evaluations were completed by each of the four selectmen, the evaluations were given in their original form to a staff member who compiled the responses into one document. The information below is a summary of the data that we compiled. In the section of performance category scoring, this section of the evaluation contained a total of nine categories. In each category, there were four to six statements that described a behavior standard within that category. The scale noted below represents the degree of performance. A four was considered commendable, equalling a performance surpassing reasonable expectations. Three, satisfactory, equalling performance meeting reasonable expectations. Meeting, sorry. Two, needs improvement, performance below reasonable expectations with improvement likely. And one, unsatisfactory, equalling a performance below reasonable expectations with an improvement unlikely. The scores in each category presented below represent the aggregated, aggregated average score of the four selectmen who completed the town administrator's performance evaluation. Within the category of characteristics and skills, a total of a 3.51 was attributed. And in this category of characteristics and skills, we evaluated individual characteristics and that average score was a 3.56 and professional skills at a 3.46. In the overall category of relations with members of the elected body, the average score was a 3.3. Working with the Board of Selectmen, a 3.3. Policy execution, a 3.3. In the overall category of staff relations, the average score was a 3.51 with staffing scoring at a 3.5, supervision at a 3.56, fiscal management at a 3.45. And in the overall category of community and citizen relations, the average score was a 3.5 with community at a 3.54 and citizen relations at a 3.46. Each of the categories was graded between satisfactory, which was three, a performance meeting reasonable expectations and commendable. Four, it's performance surpassing reasonable expectations. In the section, the second section, progress on goals. In August 2019, the Board of Selectmen established a series of five goals that included specific actions. The board was asked to review the goals and determine progress on these goals using the following scale: achieved, partially achieved, not achieved, and unable to judge. There was an option of remove goal that was provided to the board members completing the evaluation. Please note that no one selected remove from any of the goals listed below. So those five goals still stand. The four selectmen who completed the town administrator's performance evaluation were in agreement that the goals were being worked on and in some cases are ongoing or long-term goals, and therefore, none have been achieved to date. However, the following responses reflect some consensus remarks under each of those goals. So the first goal of, is under, is infrastructure management. And a comment was that databases need to be developed and maintained. However, the Board of Selectmen will need to work with the town administrator to identify resources to complete this work. Under goal number two, economic development, significant changes led by inspectional services to address blight in landlord accountability and outreach to developers and working to add more economic development tools for potential development in town. Goal number three, business retention and growth. There is positive business growth and outreach to local businesses. And a review of zoning bylaws has begun and changes were brought forward to town meeting to review and approve. Goal number four, under administration, secured funding for a review of the town charter and special acts, works within the budget and holds department heads accountable, and has created a positive work environment and a proactive workplace. Under goal number five, community identity, more res, more resources need to be identified to help with some of the marketing actions identified in this goal. And great strides have been made to increase engagement and diversity on boards and committees. In the third section of the evaluation, it's titled narrative evaluation. Responses to each question reflect consensus remarks of the four selectmen who completed the town administrator's performance evaluation. The first item was to use this space to provide any overall comments, highlights, or areas for improvement for the town administrator during the evaluation period of March 2019 to March 2020. Jay's first year started slowly, albeit the learning curve, as he started by first observing and training along with town staff to see how things were done in Adams. This also served as a reintroduction for Jay to municipal government, having left for many years for the private sector. This method worked very well for Jay by allowing staff to get familiar with him and allowed Jay some time to determine areas that may need some changes. Jay came into the job with some local, regional, and state relationships that have proven to be advantageous for our community. His knowledge of municipal finance and his attention to regional and state issues and their effect on our community have been assets. As Jay became more aware of his surroundings, his ability and personality began, began to blossom. He put forth an air of confidence and a congenial attitude. He has worked well and continues to work well with the Board of Selectmen. However, sometimes Jay works too closely with the board. When presented with challenges, Jay has risen to the occasion. From staffing to emergency matters, his first year has been anything but typical. In particular, Jay was initially charged with filling key vacancies and planning the retirements for several key department heads. Jay has had to manage the day-to-day operations of these key departments when the vacancies have occurred, all while continuing to make progress on the goals set by the Board of Selectmen. From an emergency standpoint, Jay has had to manage and move the town forward after a ransomware attack, flooding and snowstorms, and a tragic accident in a residential neighborhood. With all of these items, he has handled each situation carefully and compassionately while consoling, encouraging, and/or motivating staff, board members, and residents. The town of Adams and the Board of Selectmen are fortunate to have the services of Jay Green as town administrator. His positive demeanor, cooperative attitude, and strong work ethic have put Adams in a positive growth and community spirit position. The board members look forward to being part of the team led by Jay that will bring business growth, community pride, local government leadership, and support for the current, former, and future residents of Adams, who will proudly call this their hometown. The next question was stated as, is 202020 has been an unusual year with the COVID-19 pandemic, which has caused the delay of getting this evaluation process started? Please use this space below to provide any overall comments, highlights, or areas for improvement for the town administrator during the period of time starting April 2020. This once-in-a-100-year pandemic could not have been foreseen and everyone in local government and the community have pulled together by following the state mandates and local guidance. We are all in this together and will pull through these tough times together. With the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic during Jay's early tenure, his focus and attention to this matter was a main attribute of his presence. His reaction has been commendable as he kept the board apprised of all news and regulations coming from the state. He, along with other town officials, kept the residents of Adams updated regarding the spread of the pandemic as well as the correct procedures needed to be taken to help stop the spread of COVID-19. Our community is fortunate to have Jay as our town administrator at this time. His background in emergency management has been invaluable during this time. At the beginning of the pandemic with only one case in Berkshire County, Jay was quick to bring together emergency management personnel in a discussion about safety, change in protocols, necessary equipment, and proper cleaning. With the ultimate goal of the safety of our residents in mind, Jay made the decision to close the Council on Aging for a few days to allow for a deep cleaning of the building after a large community event had used the space over the weekend, which allowed staff time for training, cleaning, and planning ahead. Since then, Jay has worked closely with the Regional Emergency Operations Center to be sure that the town of Adams is in the loop and at the table for all important regional discussions. He has also taken the lead on the CARES Act money with oversight of these funds. Throughout the pandemic, Jay has not compromised town services. With Jay's leadership, our community was able to comply with state regulations while keeping forward momentum going within town government. He worked with staff to develop safe ways for the public to access town government. Worked to ensure that boards and continue to meet or exceed the tenants of the open meeting law, allowing for public participation. Continued progress in town construction projects, kept the building and inspections department open, allowing residents to keep their home projects moving forward, and was able to move ahead with key searches and hires, including the police chief, which was done twice, wastewater treatment plant positions, DPW positions, the community development director search, hiring a finance director, et cetera. Because of his ability to manage all of this, it is sometimes forgotten that he is still managing a community that is addressing a global health pandemic. Adams is in a better position because of his leadership, and he should be commended for the work that he has done and continues to do for the residents of our community. As the item before the board this evening is that per the town administrator's contract, annually, the town administrator shall be eligible for a raise at 0% to 5% of salary. The percentage is determined, the percentage determined will be performance-based as reflected in the evaluation from the Board of Selectmen and subject to the availability of funds. In discussions with the former town accountant and our current finance director and town accountant, I have been assured that there are enough budgeted funds in fiscal 21 to support a raise within the range just previously stated and stated in the contract for the town administrator, as well as retroactive pay to his anniversary date in an increase going forward. Jay's anniversary date is March 25th. According to Labor Council, Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 68, does allow for a raise voted on this evening to be made retroactive to March 25th, 2020, which would be his first anniversary date if the board should choose to do so. It has also been verified by Labor Council that the evaluations the board completed contained enough information about the second year of employment, that if the board should choose to do so, they could vote this evening on a raise of 0% to 5% retroactive to his second anniversary date of March 25th, 2021. This would put us back on track for subsequent years of service and assist with proper budgeting for fiscal year 2022, which is the process that we have just begun. With that, the action before the board is to, now that the performance evaluation has been completed, to approve a raise in that percentage range and to determine when that raise would go into effect. And if the board so chooses to act upon the second year as well, that would be, that would need to be done as a second motion. So at this time, what would be the board's pleasure? So at this time, what would be the board's pleasure?
Madam Chair, just a question before we begin the discussion. The evaluation itself. This is, you know, the first time we're really seeing this. Should we vote to accept this or is it information only? What, how does that work?
This is information to inform the decision in front of you, which is to act on compensation.
Okay.
Christine, I have a few questions. Now throughout this whole process, it was made. At least my take on when I was asking questions was that you had to work with Labor Council because we haven't done, you know, the standard way of doing evaluation yet. The evaluation that we did was what was originally put forth to us. So where was the Labor Council? And another question I have just out of curiosity once again is that I don't believe that when we did our evaluations, they should have went to you. I think that, you know, you mentioned that they ended up with Ashley Satko. I believe that's where they would have, should have went first of all, instead of to you. Is that a fair assumption?
The evaluations were handed to Ashley sealed.
Okay, but initially, it
They were placed in my mailbox. And they were in, in some cases, sealed envelopes, or they were placed in sealed envelopes and given to Ashley. Once an employee was identified.
Okay, so then where Madam Chairman, did the Labor Council come in? Why would they have to step in? Because I asked that question wondering why and then I thought because we needed to have a standard form that all communities use, but it doesn't seem like that is the case. We're going over the questions that were asked of us and that brings me to the point, why such a delay?
Certainly, Joe, I can answer that. So the form that was used is a similar form to what is used for all of the department heads for Town Hall. The questions were modified to reflect the work of the town administrator. I conducted research on what those questions should be because there wasn't a town administrator evaluation tool that had been developed. I had reached out to the MMA. They did not have a tool that I could use. Once the tool was in place and distributed, it was suggested to me that I should review the process with Labor Council to make sure that this was done correctly. Since I was kind of on my own, as I had mentioned several times, that I had no help in this situation. So I met with Labor Council by phone in November. I met with Labor Council again in December. I didn't receive all of the evaluations until close to the end of December. It was a busy time. So the evaluations were not compiled until January. The MMA did hold a training, which I did speak about at a, an meeting when you asked me this question recently. I attended that training to find out what other communities were doing before making the process public. So that I made sure that I was doing everything in compliance. I have met with Labor Council again to just make sure that the content that was provided would allow for two years. If that is what the board wanted to do so that we did not have to turn around and do this process immediately again. Now that we are at the second anniversary for Jay. I have also talked with Labor Council about the materials that need to be on file in his personnel record. So that those are all accurate documents. So it has taken an awful lot of research. I have developed a process and written it down in really with Labor Council's help to make sure that there is not a delay the next time this needs to be done. And that the next chair can certainly go forward with a path. Cause I did not have one when I set forth on this, this journey on my own.
Okay, fair enough. And the narrative that you just read about Jay. Was that written by you?
It was written by me once all of the information was compiled. And then it was to Labor Council to review.
So all the words that came out were from you, right?
All the words that came out were from all four evaluations that were submitted. It was a compilation of all of that. I do not know who the words were attributed to. But this document that I just read was put together by me using the compilation document that was put together by a staff member for the town. And I did not know who said anything.
Okay, and lastly, on that Section 68. It reads, as you move on, such increase may be retroactive to a date not earlier than the beginning of the fiscal year prior to the date of such vote. So what, what, what does that do as far as having to take a vote on this? What is the beginning of the fiscal year prior to the date of this vote? Will that put us in any repercussions from it?
No, so what that states is if the board wanted to make this increase retroactive to the anniversary date, the first anniversary date for Jay, which would be March 25th, 2020. That puts us into a previous fiscal year. So that would be fiscal year 20. What that, and which is allowed by this, by this state law. What is not allowed is if his anniversary date was in fiscal year 19. So we can go back to fiscal 20 and make it retroactive while we are currently in fiscal 21.
Right, but that would only give a one year and not a two year as far as the when we go to vote, you said that this would be good for two years, would it?
So the two votes that would have to take place would be if the board wanted to make the first increase retroactive to the first anniversary date of March 25th of 2020, they could do so. Then there would need to be another motion and that could be made. That increase could be retroactive to March 25th, 2021, and that would be the two years. In my conversations with the town, former town accountant and the current finance director slash town accountant. I have been told that in fiscal 21, which is our current fiscal year. We currently are budgeted at anywhere in that range. That is contracted with the town administrator. We are, we can certainly afford that. And we can take in the last quarter of fiscal 20. That is also part of the budget for fiscal 21. If the board chose to go to with a retroactive vote for the first vote of March 25th of 2020.
Well, I, I just don't understand. Doesn't our fiscal year run from June 30th and
July 1st to June 30th.
Right, so that would be allowable for the second vote? I don't get it. In short, maybe I'm missing something.
So for the first vote, if we wanted to make the pay retroactive to Jay's first anniversary date of March 25th of 2020. That would be fiscal year 20.
Right.
Okay, which is allowable per Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 68, which you just read.
Right.
Okay, and then if the board wanted to take another vote, they could do so in this making it retroactive to March 25th, 2021. And that would be in fiscal 21's budget. And would continue on in fiscal 22 budget. Because his anniversary date for the third year would be March 25th of 2022.
I'm still confused by the fiscal year prior to the date of such a vote. I just think that we can only really vote for the first year. You're saying 21, we're still in 21 fiscal year.
We are.
If I'm not mistaken.
Ed, I don't know if you would like to take a stab at trying to explain this to Mr. Novak. It is my understanding that the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 68 is really just stating that we can go back to, we can go retroactively back to fiscal. We could pay something for fiscal 20.
Right. Ed, I agree.
Christine, I haven't seen anything about this. I wasn't asked to do anything with it, so I'll have to defer until I can take a look at it.
Sure. The other option, Joe, is I can take a short recess and I can call Labor Council and get Labor Council on the phone, who said that they would be on standby for any particular questions this evening.
No, I, I don't want to put anybody in that position. I'm just confused with a fiscal year when it runs because we're still in fiscal 21 and you're want to make a vote for 20, I can see because we're out of that fiscal year, but we're still in the throes of the fiscal year 2021. It doesn't end until June 30th. And it says that to a date not earlier than the beginning of the fiscal year prior to the date of such a vote. So we're still in fiscal year 2021. I, but I don't, I don't want anybody to call Labor Council or anything like that. I'm just a little confused by it, that's all. Because that's what it states in the general law because as you read it, you just read, but you left out that last part as you read it.
The date of such vote would be March 25th of 2020.
Right, that one is fine, right, because we're by fiscal year 2020, but we're still in fiscal year 2021. So I don't know how we can use that for a vote for the second amendment or second clause that you were speaking about. It doesn't seem to fall in the parameters, that's all I'm saying. I could be wrong, but that's what the law says.
Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, actually, aren't we in, still in fiscal 2020 until June 30th was stated?
We are currently in fiscal 21. We are working on budget for fiscal 22. And his anniversary date falls in fiscal 20.
Okay. Well, I got you. Can I just ask, what were the ranges again?
Zero to 5%.
Madam Chair. Based on the results of this evaluation and the scoring results for all of the categories, it averages out to a 3.4 out of a possible 4.0 for a score. So, you know, it's between satisfactory and commendable is what the board has voted, provided inputs to. So those are the scores. I think we, in my opinion, the, the raise should be based upon, at least a major part of it should be based upon our inputs and the scores, and the resulting scores thereof. So it ended up being a 3.4, if I'm correct, as a, as a final, as a score out of a total of four. Contract indicates raise, we, the board will provide a raise between 0 and 5%. Based on the evaluation results and job performance throughout the year. And you, you know, and a big point of the last year, you know, Jay did start off, in my opinion, you know, after learning the ropes and he has experience in this area, but you're really getting on a, a roll and then the pandemic hit, but that he readjusted in the and carried the community and through through the past year through difficult times where a lot of the goals that we identified, a lot of time couldn't be spent there as much as we wanted, as much as Jay wanted. But I think now, you know, for the next year, we'll be able to get back on track there. I think not having provided a raise for between his first year and not giving him an evaluation at that time. And, you know, between 32520 and 32421. Really, to me, it's the position itself we need to abide by as a board. So it's, you know, this is an individual. Town administrator, Jay Green, but as a board, we need to, you know, we did meet the, the requirements that we were supposed to. So I think we still need to provide a salary increase to the town administrator for that first, that second year of his contract to, to meet the contract requirements. So I'm, I'm just gonna put this motion out there that as a result of the 3.4 score in regards to the evaluation of a possible four. I recommend a 3% raise to be retroactive from 32520 through 32421.
So the motion is a 3% raise? Is that what I heard, John?
That's correct, yes.
For, to be retroactive to March 25th, 2020. And for that to be the raise. You said until 242021.
And Madam Chair, I'll second that. It is actually the number I had written down.
So I have a second by member Blanchard. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say I, I have, you know, a lot of respect for Jay. I think he, he's done a good job. I was just really concerned about John's motion about bringing it into 2021. I'm not worried about the 3%. I think he's deserving of it, but can it be put into that timeframe in fiscal 2021 when it has to be, we're not out of that fiscal year yet, our finances.
So Madam Chair, you, you'll be verifying with Labor Council that everything that we voted this evening, you're going to verify that we're in, in line with state law?
Yes, I will.
Okay, so you'll do that.
Yep, and I will double check with the town accountant's office as well.
Okay.
Yep. There's no other discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain. I would definitely do it if it fell right in the category of I'm just a little worried about including 2021 in the motion. If there was a way of putting it in a motion where we stayed in 2020 and waited down the road a piece, I'd be more comfortable with it. So once again, it's certainly nothing to do with Jay. I think he's done a good job for us. I think he's a I think he's a good communicator. And once again, I'm just abstaining because I'm worried about the legalities of it.
Okay, and I'll just note that I did offer to get Labor Council on the phone to help with that. And there, so there is an extension and Christine is a yes vote. So that is. That passes. Does the board wish to take up a second vote with the second anniversary date?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to. Provide a three percent raise to the town administrator. Beginning on three twenty five, twenty one for the results of the evaluation. For the beginning of his second, second year, so second to third year, three percent increase. Based, again, based on the results of this evaluation, which covers the first two years of his job performance.
So that is a, a second three percent. That vote is a three percent retroactive to March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one.
So may I ask, so that will bring it up to a six percent raise?
Uh, no, that would be three. So the three percent raise. If you want to talk dollars, the three percent, it's a three percent on top of the, alright, so, hold on. The three percent that first passed would bring Jay's salary to ninety two thousand, seven hundred dollars. The three percent raise that was just motioned for would bring that salary to ninety five thousand, four hundred and eighty one dollars.
I, I, I guess. I, I just guess I, either I'm naive, I just don't understand this process whatsoever, how, how it's working. So, once again. I, I apologize if I'm missing something, but I just don't really understand it. So you can certainly go ahead.
Do you have a second, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I've got lots of time.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. So the first motion was because we did not do the evaluation. He has been working his second year without a raise. So the first motion was to go back and fix that issue. Because per his contract, we are as a board required to act on a raise based on evaluation. We didn't do the evaluation as we were required for this contract. So this is going back in time to fix that issue by giving the town administrator a three percent raise. Cover from the end of his first year to the, you know, through his second year. Okay, now this, that's that motion to fix what we didn't do when we're posting. Now we come upon three twenty five as his second anniversary, which will run from his second anniversary to his third year. To the end of this contract. So the vote, the second vote was to provide a three percent raise, beginning on three twenty five, which is only a few weeks ago. Which will run all the way until three twenty five of two thousand and twenty two, his final year of the contract. Okay, so it's, it's two separate raises, once, one is for the year he didn't get one. So we're going back to fix that. And the second one is from March twenty fifth of this year, again, a few weeks ago. Until the, until three twenty five of twenty two. That will be that three percent raise. So it's not like a six percent raise, it's a three percent to fix what we didn't do. And then this current year is third year is to provide him with a three percent raise to the end of this first contract.
Correct. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
I will, I will second the motion for discussion.
Thank you.
My only concern, I actually had a higher amount.
Okay.
But John had mentioned based off that evaluation, I don't think it's fair. To base off that evaluation. Cause I believe that the evaluation for the second year would be higher than that for the first year. Given everything that had happened in the second year. I mean, does anybody disagree?
No, that's, no, that's your prerogative. If you feel he deserves a, a different raised amount than the motion indicates, then, you know, this motion would be voted on. It could end up in the negative and then you could, and Madam Chair, I don't want to speak for you.
No, go ahead.
And then another motion could be made by yourself for a different raised amount. So I just put the motion out there for a vote. If it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, then we would take another, we would take another vote.
Okay.
Exactly. I'm sorry.
Well, when I'm basing off, like the first raise was based off the average from the evaluation.
Well, we, we didn't do it, but the problem we have here is we didn't do the evaluation for the first year. We did it, I imagine it was about a year and a half in of this contract. So for the first year, we didn't do one and no raise was given. So he worked, he worked, he's working up to now, he hasn't gotten a raise at all. And then in December, we did this work and we, we've got the results this evening. So if, if, you know. I, I'm basing it on the score by the four, four board members. Yes, it was a year and a half in, and yes, we've had the pandemic, things have changed. But that, this is just my opinion that I'd rather go by a score so I can tie it to something. That's just, just one, one select board member's opinion.
And that, that's exactly what I'm saying. But we didn't do an evaluation for the second year. There was a section on the evaluation that we could kind of look into the second year. But we didn't actually do an evaluation of the second year.
Yeah, it's, it's timing, really. It's the, I think we submitted our inputs in this, was it December, Madam Chair? Like halfway through his contract?
Yeah, so the evaluation tool was sent out in October. I got the last of the results back in December.
Okay, so it was really halfway into his second year, we submitted our responses to the evaluation.
Yes, because fortunately, I started the process of developing all of this and then a pandemic hit. And I was asked to delay this.
And my, my comments have nothing to do with that. But the evaluation, from what I understood, was to be on the first year. Even though there was one section that would, that allowed for discussion of the second year. Or what had already expired in the second year. And all I'm saying is basically, I think it, to be fair, we should do another evaluation for the second year. I know it's more stuff, timing, et cetera, et cetera. But I, I think that's, to be fair.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to say, this is Joe, that I want to make it known that I received the copy in October. And I got it in promptly. And I can't see the reason why, I don't know who the other members were. It took till toward the end of December to finish it. I, I don't understand that.
No, you were the first one to submit it, Joe, you are correct.
Right.
Yep. Is there any other discussion? So there is a, a motion and a second on the table for a, a three percent raise that would be retroactive to March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one.
Could, quick question, could debate, that be changed in the future? So say if we approve this now and then did an evaluation for the second year, could it then be changed later?
The motion on the table is for it to be the year, three percent from starting twenty twenty one anniversary date. Through his anniversary date into twenty twenty two. So if I could, I could ask Labor Council, if you'd like me to, to see if that can be rescinded and redone?
Well, I'm, I'm just putting it out there, we can. But. I believe it could be changed in retroactively, just like we're doing for twenty twenty. I mean, if the evaluation, if we do another evaluation for the second year. And it comes out where maybe we should be doing a four percent raise. I mean, I would think we'd be able to motion for a one percent raise. Retroactively to the March twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Unless my thinking is all askew.
Good, if it was done this evening, I apologize that I failed you and didn't do a second evaluation.
No, I'm.
No, it's, I, this falls on me, I understand as your chair, and I have failed on with you. This was not an easy process.
No, and I'm not, I'm not faulting anyone for that. I just want to make sure that as a board, we are fair to Jay.
That's who I feel badly for.
And Rick, I understand what, what your, your point is and I, I understand completely. But I just, we, we have, Jay's been very patient with us, you know. And town administrators are hard to find. And I just, you know, I just want to make it whole today and going forward, we would continue, we would make it right. I just want to make it whole, you know, through three twenty five of twenty one, through his second year that we, we take care of that. And then, yeah, well, it's up to you, I, I put that motion out. This will take, take him to the end of his contract. You know, I think, you know, that would take care of his salary till then. I'm just, wanted, I just want to take care of this like we should have done. And again, I'm not blaming anybody, but we, we're, we're bored. But I, you know, I just put that motion out there. Because if we did this, the, you know, the way that the contract indicates, we would have had a second evaluation. And on three twenty five or thereabouts, you know, we would have recommended a raise for his last year. So, which is per his contract, which, you know, I'd like to take care of that. I'd like to, you know, for his last year where we should have had an evaluation for his third year. We take care of that with a raise now and then it's taken care of. Even, even though we, you know, we, we need to do better and that includes me. That it's taken care of. You know, he did, Jay's been very patient with us without having a raise, just as he started in twenty. Well, started in, like, when did he, what was his start date, three twenty five?
Twenty nineteen.
Nineteen, twenty nineteen. So twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, no, twenty one, he's gone two years without a raise. So I just want to just take care of it tonight. It's done for the rest of his, his last year. And then, you know, we, of course, we work on a second three year contract and, and get it right the next time, you know. That's, but that's just, again, one, one board member's opinion.
Yeah. And i- if I, normally I don't chime in. But if, looking at the, the number that came out in the evaluation was a three point four, five. I would be looking closer to a four percent raise in the second year. Knowing what Jay has shouldered for all of, everything with the pandemic. And a lot of that he's done on his own. And he hasn't taken a day off despite some encouragement to take time off. He continues to, his, his time off has been now working from home. When I have told him that he needs to get out of the office. So he has been very patient in the two plus years that he has been here. And I was hoping to. Make good on it. And also seeing, you know, what other communities are, are paying or proposing to pay their town administrators. I want to make sure that we're valuing our town administrator, who, who does an awful lot. Who manages the day to day operations of the largest town in the Berkshires. Which also serves sometimes as a, a small city. So he, he does commendable work. And I would like to see that somewhat reflected in a raise, if possible. And apologize that it's not cleaner for the second year.
And, and Madam Chair, the reason I say three is that. We as a board have provided two percent raises to all of our union employees, which all, they work very hard, of course. And the non-union staff do receive a baseline, I believe, of two percent raise. And then there's steps, which, you know, cost a living two percent. But those that are eligible for steps per, you know, per the scale, the pay scale, they do earn more than a two percent raise. So I think everyone in the community works very hard. So, you know, if, if we feel as a board, I'm just going to say. That I, I would rescind my motion if we feel we will be doing this, now, we're already in his third year, we're late. And we would do a, another appraisal and get it done quickly. And then go through this again and then identify a, another opportunity to identify a raise. It would be retroactive back, I would assume, to three twenty five of this year, twenty one for his final year. You know, I'm okay with that, if that's where the board wants to go and if we can do this and get it, now that we've gone through the process and we have all the rules and regulations and everything. That, that's fine with me, if that's what the board wants to do is, and we feel we can get it done in a timely manner. And so we don't have to put him off, you know, so, you know, for his third year, he'll start off with, again, not a raise. Until we get the evaluation done. So if, again, if the board is, you know, we agree, we can do that in a timely manner, get our inputs in. As Joe is very good at it, that I'm okay with that. I'll rescind my motion and we'll do another valuation on the last year that, you know, on the second year of his contract.
To be perfectly honest, I know that that would fall on my shoulders. I do not have the capacity to do that in my remaining weeks as your chair. We have a reorg coming up in May. I don't. I, I don't have the capacity in the month of April to put together another evaluation tool. And that would fall solely on my shoulders as it did already. Just to be perfectly honest. And that would not be Jay to not have that turned around quickly. We are in the throes of budget season. And I have a full-time job. I, I just can't.
Okay, so what I did is I made a motion for a three percent increase. If there are those that feel it should be higher or should be lower, vote no against my motion.
Yep.
And then we'll wait for another motion, or we'll do an evaluation the, the next, you know, do it during the summer, I don't know. But again, I just put the motion out there for a three percent raise for his final year. And, and we'll see how the vote goes. If it votes no, no problem here, and then we'll go for another motion if the other board members feel that it should be a different number. Now, and, and finally, I want to thank the, the chair, for the, it is a lot of work to do this, and you know, we've done it in past years, been on a board for a long time, and a lot, lot, you know, it is not, it's a time-consuming task to get it all pulled together and presented in the correct way. And so I, I want to thank the chair. It's not easy, not an easy job to do, so thank you.
Okay, there's no other discussion. There is a motion on the table. And it is a three percent retroactive to March 25th, 2021. It is a roll call vote. Rick?
No.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Once again, I'm going to reiterate, I think this is hard for me to understand. I, once again, like to commend Jay for his work. I think he's doing a good job, but I'm just kind of worried about the logistics, particularly the fiscal year, doing it for 2021 when we're still in it, and the general law, which you, Madam Chairman, said that you're going to see is correct. But once again, I have greatest respect for Jay. I've got to know him pretty good. In the last few times, I'm not much of a man to go up and sit in an office and chat, but when I have something that concerns, Jay's always there to have an answer. So once again, I just want to say with my abstention that it's certainly nothing against Jay's work that he's doing for our community.
And I'm going to vote no. So that motion fails. Is there another motion on the table?
You will make a motion that the board approve a four percent raise effective or retroactive to March 25th, 2021.
I have a motion by Rick for four percent. Do I have a second? I believe I can second that. So I will second that motion. And I will open that up for any discussion.
So again, if, you know, if this is nothing, is Jay's performance, I think he's done a fantastic job. We, we just haven't done a, you know, I was born by the one evaluation that we did. I just feel that town administrators' salary should be an increase, it should be, you know, also consider what other the employees have received. Who also, a majority do work very hard at what they do. And they've worked through the COVID probably, you know, the pandemic we've had, and they've also have done a commendable job. And so that's the reason I'm going to go with a three. I think he's done a fantastic job, and, but I'll, the reason I'll vote no is I just, I just believe it should be a three percent raise instead of four.
And not to speak for Jay, but I, I will tell you that he has tried to take this raise out of the budget going into fiscal '21, and he tried to take it out of the budget for fiscal '22. And his staff made sure that this was put in there for fiscal '21, and he, they made sure that there was a raise put in for fiscal '22. And they made sure that it was budgeted up to that five percent range. Because they, they do think pretty highly of, of their town administrator. So this must be a very uncomfortable situation for Jay, because he has, he's tried twice now to opt out of taking a raise. And I, my feeling on the four percent for the second year was using that range, that 3.45 that the evaluation came out to, I thought was between a three and a four. So if we gave a three percent in the first year and a four percent on the second year, I felt like that accurately reflected the average in the evaluation tool overall. And that's, that's my thinking on that. Is there any other discussion on the four percent? Hearing none, it is a roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
No.
Okay, Joe?
Abstain.
And Christine is a yes. So that motion does carry. And I just, to kind of wrap up that whole discussion, most of that discussion was about process and not necessarily about Jay's work. I, I encourage you to go back and read the executive summary, Jay, when all is said and done, and I can get that to you, because you'll have to sign it. And, you know, read the words from the Board of Selectmen talking about the, the good work that you are doing for our community and how proud we are that you represent the town of Adams. So please, I know that this was a lengthy discussion, mostly about process. I just, just know that that's what that was mostly about and not about your work or your actions. All right. That takes us out of the new business area, and it brings us to department reports. So Jay, let's go ahead and put you right on the spot and have the town administrator report.
Thank you very much. Thank you, each individual member of the board. I'm not going to, just going to say thank you very much for your consideration. I appreciate it. Yes, I attempted and failed twice to zero myself out. But the accounting department has a, a way of doing what they want to do, despite that. So thank you, and let's get back to work, please, and advance Adams as a community here forward. First news this evening, I have for you is the Department of Housing Community Development has approved our 40R bylaw as approved at town meeting in September. So we're making progress there. Although it still needs to be verified, we believe that the Department of Housing and Community Development has approved approximately for the zoning buy-in about $350,000. So we should be expecting approximately that amount of money at some point. We'll have to review again how we can use that money, et cetera, but it was always designed to be used for some form of infrastructure, I believe. But more information to follow on that. The American Recovery Act, item number two this evening, is still being, that would be that $2.3 million we expect to get from the stimulus bill. I'm, I'm calling the first bill that was passed stimulus, the pending bill that's being debated in Washington right now, being infrastructure. So that bill that has passed, that is law, we expect to get $2.3 million as of this week from Administration of Finance at the state. They're still waiting guidance for that. We expect guidance soon, and that will tell us exactly how we can spend it, what the process is to spend it, if we have to appropriate it through normal channels, et cetera. When that happens, I'll let the board know what the process will look like. The infrastructure bill that's being debated, we are contacted by Congressman Neal's office. I believe some of you saw the article from the, the conversation at the Dalton Select Board about soliciting information and feedback for, for certain projects. From what we're able to gather, this bill is going to have money in it that will flow through into the individual communities nationwide through normal programming. Whether that be Chapter 90, whether it be the Stormwater Revolving Fund, whatever it may be, those programs will be funded, and we will be able to access them. Road, bridges, et cetera, water, sewer, whatever Congress decides to authorize funding for. However, we believe that based on our conversation with Congressman Neal's office and through other channels, that this bill will have the option for earmark, as long as the earmark is somewhat related to infrastructure. Donna Seaz and I sat down, and we, we solicited some feedback for some other community leaders, and we have decided that we are going to solicit Congressman Neal's office for whatever earmark he may be able to put into this legislation, if that process goes through, et cetera, that it would be Graylock Glen. So I, I told the board, I believe, at last week's workshop, I'd have a little bit more information for you. That is the information we have. That letter was signed today by me. I'm going to get it to everybody tomorrow. But we felt we could ask for certain roads, we could ask for certain things. You know, Howland Avenue, we're pursuing a transportation bond bill for state-owned but municipal-maintained roadways, excuse me, state-numbered but municipally-owned, maintained roadways. That should hopefully take care of Howland Avenue. We have legislative support, we have Mass Highway District One support for that application. So we knew we would have a funding source for that. We know we're going to probably have some funding source for the wastewater treatment plant, and we know we're going to probably have some funding source for some of the other infrastructure in town. What's the one project that we have that's critical to the community? What's the one project that we have that doesn't really fit in any particular bucket of programming that we can access funds, our outdoor center? So that's what we're keeping our fingers crossed for. I'll keep everyone in the, in the, in the board informed as we go. Turning to clinics, as Dr. Rhodes mentioned, we have a 1,500-dose clinic tomorrow at St. Elizabeth's. A portion of that is J&amp;J, Johnson &amp; Johnson, single-dose, portion of that is Pfizer, first dose. That's going to be the largest amount, I believe, that we've processed in one clinic, and I'm very excited about getting up there to help with that. It's just empowering to be able to do it. So we're, we're still offering these clinics as we get the vaccine, we're still mobilizing, and we're still getting volunteers to help out, many of whom are our town staff, Sadeev North Adams staff. So that's the latest on, on the clinics. Lastly, we had a finance committee meeting Monday evening. We assembled at Adams Memorial Building. It was the first time that we were able to get the finance committee to, together in one room. We did so, meeting COVID protocols. And they voted to approve the transfer from the reserve fund in the amount of $40,000 for the accessible project at former Town Hall, now Registry D. So with that, that completes the funding for that project, and that'll move forward by the Community Development Department, and that is all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Any questions for Jay?
Yes. Excuse me, up. Jay, could you just, I know a lot of people view our meeting, could you just put, very quickly, what 40R will help us do in this community?
So if everyone recalls, Mass General Law's 40R, that was a smart growth overlay district. What that allows is for housing in such areas as Memorial School, 5 and 7 Housick Street, the old Waverly Buildings, Berkshire Cotton Buildings, and some other identified parcels. If, if a developer chooses to develop a, a housing project there, they have the opportunity to access state funds to help fund the development of the building into housing. Because Adams chose that zoning, we were given a zoning incentive payment from the state, and that was the amount of money that I, I referenced. So it's a zoning overlay district. You know, it may sit there and no one uses it, but I can tell you, we've had about three or four good conversations about Memorial School and about 5 and 7 Housick Street accessing the tenants of that program. So it's supposed to sweeten the pot for developers here in Adams.
Okay, thanks, Jay.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Jay?
I do. In regards to the transportation or the infrastructure bill that is being put forward, Representative Neal requested some inputs from the communities, and I, I know that at least one other community had, the Board of Selectmen had an opportunity to provide inputs, at least make their feelings known, or what they felt could, you know, should be part of that list of inputs. Has that, has that, that letter been sent to Neal yet?
I don't know if Donna sent it yesterday. Excuse me, I don't know if Donna sent it today, but we finished it this afternoon.
Okay, so I just have a, just an issue, and again, nothing, you know, nothing confrontational here, everybody process-wise, but you know, what role, you know, for the board, this amount of money for the federal government coming through as a US Congressman that the, the local elected authority, the Board of Selectmen, didn't have a, and I'm sure we're going to agree on the majority of what you've done, but the Board of Selectmen didn't have the opportunity to provide input to the requests. I may be missing something, Neil.
The, the reason why is because we had to move quickly in order to do this, and, and that was the reason why Donna and I decided to move quickly. Second of all, none of this is, is written in stone. The Select Board could certainly draft another letter, and we wanted to get a letter and immediately advocating for the Glen. Now, being brutally honest, we're told that these earmarks will be no more than $1 million to $2 million. We need about $7.5 million for the Glen. So we struggled quite a bit as to what to, what to write for with this. So it was not an easy process, but we felt we needed to move quickly, and we felt we wanted to almost offer a bullet vote, if you will, for the Glen, hoping that maybe if the congressman saw that this is what we're looking for, this is what's most important to the, to the community, which is all the input Donna and I have always gotten, at least in my short time with, with Adams, that that's where we wanted to, to focus on it. However, the board can certainly have a conversation, we can set up a workshop, and the board can discuss other projects that they would like to seek earmarks for. And we can put another letter in that says, should the congressman choose not to vote for, choose not to put in an earmark for the Glen, what other projects would the town like? The reason why we, we didn't put that language in the, in the letter was because our strategy was, it might be low-hanging fruit to choose a lesser amount for, for a more standardized, you know, project. Especially when we felt that if the bill did pass, there would be programming through normal channels available for some of the other projects that we would, we would likely identify. So that's, that was our thought process with that, and I sincerely apologize if the board felt left out. But Donna and I had a pretty robust conversation about it, and we, we did want to move quickly and take advantage of this.
That's understood. I just, I just want to, just for the record, that I, I just believe that the Board of Selectmen, even though it was a quick turnaround, we could have special meetings at the board. You know, probably should have had an opportunity to review and provide inputs to this, to the letter. At this point, the letter's been submitted. That's fine, we'll get a copy of it very soon. Appreciate both your, your efforts, but I, I just think, I just think with that amount of money, and, and as a Board of Selectman member, that we should have been involved with that type of request. That's all. Let's make it for the record. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to say too, that this infrastructure bill has a long way to go as far as what it's going to end up being. It's certainly not a sure thing at this time. What's in the bill that's presented may be, look a lot different if it is given the okay by Congress and the Senate. So I don't think right now that, you know, we really know what's in it, because it seems, once again, it's going to be split right between the Democrats and the Republicans, what's in it, how it's going to work. So we have a long wait to see what the final results will be.
I, I should clarify too, John, that this is not for the entire infrastructure bill, it's just for any available earmarks that the, the congressman is able to do. We were told initially that each, we believe each member of Congress will have upwards of 10 earmarks available, somewhat related to the nature of the infrastructure bill, not exceeding $1 million to $2 million. Notwithstanding whatever infrastructure, as Joe was saying, whatever money was, was put in there. And that's, that's why we felt if we had a chance to get an earmark, even if it was a million or two, it may help us leverage access to other funds, such as the bond money at the state level, and that it would be a comprehensive project, a little bit of federal money, a little bit of state money. God knows, the town of Adams has certainly invested in the Glen, and we continue to God knows, the town of Adams has certainly invested in the Glenn, and we continue to do so, as the board know. So that was our, just giving you the full concept of what our, our thinking was at Town Hall.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I, I certainly hear you for future purposes.
Quick question. Jay, you mentioned we need seven million. Is that over the money already earmarked for the Environmental Center?
No, I think the entire, I think the, between the two bond bills, and I should probably know this now, but it's getting, I want to say it's eight. I believe we had eight million dollars total authorized in the two, two bond bills. What's happening is, is that the longer it takes for that bond money to be released by Beacon Hill, the more expensive construction costs are going up, and we're going to soon exceed that. Like, for example, that eight million, you know, give or take, that's about seven point five million right now. The building is about five million, and then we have about two point five million to do some landscape, you know, work, site, site work around there. That also doesn't include approximately three million dollars estimated left for the water system up there. We need the water tank, you know, finish the water distribution system. So that's the grand total package, probably about ten million to, to finish, build the outdoor center, finish that and put the, finish the rest of the water system in. That's the, that's the whole, the whole enchilada.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Town Council reports. Ed, thanks for hanging on for two plus hours.
Not a problem. So I wanted to begin by letting you know that I've spoken to the land court regarding the tax foreclosure case involving MJD. And they've advised me that although no action yet has been taken, they are looking into it. I responded that I would call them again and make it a regular occurrence until I can get some movement from that court. I also received research and responded to a question concerning a motion and a vote that was made by an alternate member of a board. I appeared at a Superior Court hearing concerning a pending case for judicial review of a board of health matter. I corresponded to staff concerning the results of the hearing and my need for further information. I prepared a number of documents for filing in, in that case. I also notified staff about the schedule for further hearings concerning the case. I spoke by telephone to a member of staff concerning a matter of budgeting for her office. In follow-up to that conversation, I researched and responded to two requests made by her. I received, researched and responded to a request from staff concerning the disposal of a motor vehicle seized by the town in connection with the tax foreclosure proceeding. I received, researched and responded to a request from staff concerning the process for filling a vacancy on a board. I responded to a question regarding the annual town meeting. I received and responded to a communication from staff concerning a complaint for judicial review of a decision of the zoning board of appeals. I communicated to staff my need for documents and recordings of all hearings that have taken place. I received, researched and responded to a question concerning campaign activity at the local transfer station. And I received, researched and responded to a question concerning whether there was a requirement to conduct an in-person public hearing on Zoom or other remote means. That does it.
Thank you, Ed. Any questions for, for Mr. St. John? Ed, just a quick question. Is the dangerous dog hearing still on for April thirtieth at this time?
It's currently on for April thirtieth. I haven't heard whether indeed we're gonna go forward or not because of the concerns that the trial court has with respect to having people in court. They are still keeping, keeping people from coming into the court building because of pandemic concerns. And unfortunately, there have been two instances over the past month where they've had to close the court down because of positive cases within the court. So keeping my fingers crossed that it's gonna happen on that day and certainly prepare for it as though it is gonna happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. There's nothing else for Town Council. We'll go ahead and move on to subcommittee and liaison reports. Rick?
I have nothing.
John?
Nothing to report.
Joe?
Yeah, due to the time, I just had an executive committee meeting for the Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership and also a subcommittee meeting with the Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership. And that's just to keep you informed, and when there's a more reasonable time, I'll let you know what, what has been going on.
Okay, and then Joe, you had asked a couple weeks ago for, to, to add something from the Woodlands Partnership to an upcoming agenda and that you would be sending more information. I haven't received anything yet. Is that still?
Well, I, I told Deb early on that I contacted Melissa Provinger two times. She's overseeing the project and she never got back to me. And I only call people twice, and if they don't answer, then I never call them again. But I did inform Deb that it wasn't going to be happening.
Oh, okay. I hadn't heard that. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just wanted to make sure that I didn't lose it off the list. So I'll just wait and see if there's something more that comes from that.
Okay.
Thank you. And I don't have anything on the subcommittee and liaison reports because Jay's already commented on the finance committee meeting that took place earlier this week. So with that, I'll move to announcements and go the order. Rick?
Nothing.
John?
I'm good.
Joe?
Yeah, two quick things. First of all, I don't really go on social media, but I was asked to look at the article about, that was in I Berkshires about the amending the marijuana bylaws. And either I misspoke or I was misquoted. But my idea was not whether or not marijuana was good or bad as far as a profit margin. That wasn't my concern. I was thinking about the town, what we could receive from these operations as far as economics to help our community. I'll leave the diagnosis to a doctor and a clinical psychologist. The ills of drinking or the ills of using marijuana, that's beyond my scope. So I just wanted to clarify that. And secondly, on a note that's a little disappointing to me, and, but it just shows how society is. We can't sweep under the rug the murder that took place here in Adams. It just shows that the social ills of this country and this world affect small towns. And once again, Adams is a great place to live. But once again, it's just something that, you know, you can't sweep under the table. It happened. And I just want people to know that I firmly believe Adams is a very safe community. And that, you know, as a community, we need to stay in touch and realize that, you know, we're not immune to the type of thing that happened, and that's all I have.
I just have one announcement for the board to just be aware of. The owner of the Viking Pub, Scott Lee, has communicated with the town that he will be closed for a period of time. The Village Friar Restaurant that was connected to the Viking Pub has decided to close. And therefore, given the current COVID restrictions, the Viking Pub cannot be open because food is not available. So they, Scott has indicated that he's going to be taking a few weeks to regroup and figure out a path forward. So he just wanted to make sure that that was communicated to us as the licensing authority, that the Viking Pub will be closed for a, a period of time. And he will let us know when it is reopened. He is working with the inspectional services team to make sure that he is in compliance for reopening when that is decided. With that, I don't have anything else to come before the board. I just will note that next week, we do have two budget workshops. The first of which is Tuesday, the thirteenth. It'll be at six PM. I believe that the agendas have been posted. That is a combined workshop with the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen. And then the second workshop will be held on Thursday, April fifteenth, also at six PM. And again, I believe that that agenda has been posted, and that will be in combination with the finance committee. Both of those workshops will be held in person at the gymnasium at Memorial School. And I, I know that she's not on the call any longer, but the town clerk certainly helped with the logistics and the setup for an in-person meeting. And I want to thank her and custodial staff, Kyle, who made sure that everything is distanced. Everybody will have their own table. They'll have their own chair, their own hand sanitizer. There are some shields, if anybody would like to have a shield at their table instead of wearing their mask for the entire time. There are certainly several precautions that have been taken. And we are looking forward to having an in-person meeting for these budget discussions. So I just want to make sure that that is on your calendars for next week, again, the thirteenth to fifteenth, both at six PM, and will be at Memorial School. Following that, there'll be a, another budget workshop on Tuesday, the twentieth, at six PM, also at Memorial School. And then we will have a regularly scheduled meeting on April twenty first at seven PM. We will make a determination about whether or not that's in person or via Zoom after the DPH guidance comes out on the fifteenth of April. So please stay tuned for that. Those seem to be all of the upcoming meetings, so they should be on your calendar. If you need a reminder, please reach out. With that, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion by Member Blanchard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Duval. Roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It's a yes from Christine. So thank you very much. We are officially adjourned at nine twenty-two PM. Have yourselves a good night.